The first agenda item is apologies for absence.
And yes, we've had apologies from Sylvia.
And I think there were two others, I think, not present, but no apologies.
Olivia. councillor, Olivia Hutton has her hand up.
Yeah, just to say that Richard's been not able to, he sends his apologies.
Okay, so two apologies. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, this is disclosure of interests. This is the deal with the disclosure by members of any disclosable pecuniary interests, and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. I see a hand up from councillor Liz Borman.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I'd like to disclose an interest in item seven, as I know one of the traders, but have spoken to officers, and as this is only about granting a licence, and I won't have any say in which trader would be given the licence if it's agreed, then I can take part in discussions and vote on this item.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other declarations of interests? No. Now this brings us on to item three, which is public participation. So if members of the general public in the virtual gallery would like to speak, would you indicate that it's time to do so? Would you please say which item on the issue that you wish to make representations of? And if councillor Cash could keep a list of who's indicating.
I can see Christine Brett at the moment indicating, and Rachel Atkinson. I can't see.
Charlie Grimble.
Right.
Anyone else? I see three.
Sorry, you've also got Simon and Gemma McFarlane looking to speak as well.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, George, I didn't catch that, did you?
You've also got Simon and Gemma McFarlane there with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
And Becky Frankham, sorry.
Hi, I'd like to speak as well, please.
Yeah, and Harley House.
Okay.
We've got Clarissa.
On page two as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
If we can just take items that the... In terms of the agenda, I think it would be useful if we could group the representations by agenda item. So in terms of what we have for the agenda.
Same case.
Yeah, so we just take them by agenda item. I'm assuming that the items are either about the Seaford concession, possibly the Code of Arms, or Climate Change Working Parties. Does anyone want to speak to anything other than one of those three? Well, I think let's take these in the order they're on the agenda, so.
Yes, I just wondered if Jean's got the list there, whether we just run through the list of the names that were taken.
Yeah, we could do that.
In case anyone isn't obviously talking about some of those items, then we could take them by name, if that makes sense.
I haven't got a complete list, I think, so I can tell you what I've got. I've got Chris Brett, then Rachel, and then Charlie Grimble, then McFarlane, and is it Becky Frankham, and then I missed someone, and Keith Blackburn. So I haven't got everyone, I don't think.
You've got Clarissa Meek.
Right.
Keith Blackburn.
Yeah, I've got him.
Harley House, Andy Bridge, I can see your hand up. So that should be a complete list.
Okay, so we go through them in the order they were signalling. Okay. Jean, who was first? This was Christine.
Chris Brett, yeah.
Okay, so Cash, sorry. Chris Brett, if you'd like to unmute yourself, and you have no more than four minutes.
All right. Good evening Chair and councillors. I'll be quite quick, because I think... I just want to talk about item 4.1, which is the community services minutes, and I'm obviously want to support again, item 4.1 CS08.2, the Splash Point repairs, and commend the council for agreeing to do that this year. I really hope you are going to do it, because I think it will be our best chance to get any contribution from the district council. And also CS08.3, the water refill points, as you all know, I've been trying to get these established for several years now, and again, I think we really need to use the CIL money together with our own funds and do that now. So that's those two that I'd like to commend. And then the other thing that I would just like to say about item nine, the climate emergency motion, is that I'm incredibly impressed with all the work that the working party has done on this. They've got some incredible innovative and creative ideas, and I think we should be really appreciative of what they are trying to do for the town. And I really hope that this is going to be progressed in the near future. And that's all from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think there's not a response needed to that, but thank you for your input. And next was?
Rachel Atkinson.
So am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
You are, we can.
Yes. So I live in Seaford. Probably most of you don't know me, but I was talking to Rodney recently, and he suggested that I make my suggestion at one of your meetings, and it's in relation to the climate change item. Because I've been thinking for a long time that Seaford could become a pollinator-friendly town. That's my suggestion. And the reason I think that that would be a popular idea, there's a lot of interest in pollinators and wildlife, I think, amongst general population. And it could be a source of sort of creative things for the town. And I suppose the reason I started thinking of it is because I'm a beekeeper, but that's a honeybee keeper, and I'm very aware that Seaford is already quite pollinator-friendly, because actually, you know, the gardens are full of flowers, and my bees basically make their honey from Seaford flowers, and it's very good honey. But I'm also very aware that pollinators are not just about honeybees. You know, the pollinators, the wild bees, bumblebees and butterflies and others, are, we know, in need of support. And they are lovely to have, lots of them in the town. And, you know, it could be a source of ideas of encouraging people to grow flowers or trees that are pollinator-friendly. It could be something that the schools could do as a project. The tree wardens, I think, probably already think about pollinator-friendly trees, but, you know, it could be something. And possibly, the town could become famous for its honey and its bees. You know, that could be something, because there are a number of beekeepers in Seaford, who's demand for the honey is way over the capacity to provide Seaford honey. But people do enjoy it. But then, the other reasons to suggest it, I have a friend in Seaford who's illustrated a lovely children's book about bees. And I think that in Seaford, there are a lot of people who are generally interested in, you know, nature and wildlife, and for whom encouraging bees and butterflies by maybe having verges and the blooming Seaford pollinator-friendly would be very popular. But not just with them, also with, I think, people who aren't particularly interested. I think it's something that people could get hold of. There we are. That's my idea.
I think if you want to put any of those in writing to the Chair of our Climate Change Working Group, we'd surely be pleased to receive them. Okay, thank you. Next.
Isabel wants the word, I think. Isabel wants the word.
Sorry, and I just wanted to sort of, a positive thing really to add to that is that the Seaford Head Golf Course is signed up to Operation Pollinator. So they've got the, they are already a part of that, and they work with, I think it's through Sussex Wildlife Trust as well.
Yeah.
Wildflower areas. So, yeah, just to add that. That was last June. I think we signed up to that, and it's something that we do maintain.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Jean, who was, councillor Cash, who was next?
Charlie Grimble.
Thank you Chair. I prefer if Keith Blackburn spoke before me, because I may not then need to say anything at all. But I'm acting as backup, because I wasn't sure whether Keith was going to be here or not. So if you invite Keith to speak first, I will then either remain stum afterwards, or just add a few points that he may have.
That seems a sensible use of time. I think I'm willing to agree to that. I can't see Keith on my screen at the moment. Keith, wave to me. Where is he? I'm having troubles working. Where is Keith? Is Keith Blackburn?
He's got his hand up, I can see him, and he's unmuted.
He's on screen two.
Yeah.
Off the other end.
Keith, you were here.
Right.
Ah, yes, now I see you, Keith.
Yep. Do you want to speak now, then?
Please.
Yep. I'd like to support the recommendations in item nine of the papers, the Working Parties interim report, supporting the amended recommendations. Taking an overview of the report and the papers, clearly the problem is lack of resources to move matters forward as quickly as probably all of us would probably wish. Staff are under great pressure because of Covid-19, and the detailed ideas in Appendix C and Appendix A2 are full of words like action, audit, investigate, consult, assess, et cetera. This means that somebody would have to do some work. And that somebody, in many cases, would need to be Seaford Town Council staff. A further point, 70% of the initiatives that are identified in the table in the paper, pages 53 and 54, they identify short-term action, which puts further pressure on staff resources. Usually, when organisations are short of resources, they do three things. Prioritise. This is particularly difficult for staff when we've got no town clerk, and we haven't had for quite a while, and probably not for another couple of months at least. So that makes the problem much worse for staff. And finally, the third thing we do is get somebody else to do the work, or some of the work. And I'll come on to that. The Seaford Community Partnership and volunteers were trying to do work to help that would minimise the need for work by the town council staff. I'd just like to talk for a couple of minutes about the bid to the National Lottery. This bid has been led by the National Park Trust, and it's on behalf of a number of partners, like Lewis District Council, like the Seaford Community Partnership, and so on. There's about eight or nine partners. And what the bid does is it seeks to get agreement from the National Lottery for £150 development work in 2020 and 21, with a view to that leading to a full bid for probably over £2 million. So the aim of the bid is very much in our interest to get extra resources. What the bid does is it looks across the district to protect and regenerate habitats and green spaces, to use more sustainable energy and transport, and also to build community skills and resilience. So we have long-term changes. There are a number of projects that have been developed specifically for Seaford, and I can just give you five examples. Enhancing the biodiversity of tide mills in the Lower Ouse estuary, enhancing local green spaces by having local green spaces that were designated by the neighbourhood plan, and we're seeking to have a friends group for each local green space that we hope would contribute to improve diversity and improve use. The third project is to have a second beach garden and a health wall at Splash Point, at the Splash Point end of the Seaford. Fourth project is helping the trees for Seaford, former tree wardens, to green the streets of Seaford by planting more trees, creating green corridors and wildflower verges. And the fifth example of projects is to improve cycling and pedestrian connectivity between the town centre and the national park. So they're the five examples of the projects that are in the bid for Seaford. All the projects will be under the umbrella of the Green Corridors Mapping Project, which is a good start to lay out what people are planning to do and get an overview of what's going on.
Keith, you're coming up to time now.
Yeah, I'm just about to say, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And just to complete this segment, Charlie Grimble, do you want to come back in, or is that, Keith covered it?
I'd just like to amplify one point that Keith made about resources. Obviously, we are in constrained times with resources, but what you need to know is that, for example, Martello Rotary has restructured itself so that the skill base that is within there is available to support the initiatives that Keith has been talking about, particularly on local green spaces. Secondly, as Vice Chair of Governors at Cradle Hill School, we will be using some land on the school to create a wildlife pond, which we don't have at the moment. So what I'm saying is that despite the constraints that we all sort of feel, there are a number of initiatives where people are already now being empowered and adding human resources, if you like, to enable these visions to be collected. To give you an example, on the local green spaces, I now have three groups where 29 people who weren't previously involved are now involved in supporting three of those local green spaces. Thank you very much, councillors.
Thank you. And you know, the point that the more things that can be supported by volunteer effort, the better it is, because the town council really is in a straightened position in terms of reduced income, officers furloughed. So that the point that Keith made earlier about the number of things that could be done, we have very, very limited resources now to do much beyond. I encourage volunteers, but just to make that point. We need to keep moving now. So, okay, so Cash, who was next?
Simon McFarlane. If I've got the name right? No?
Yep, that's me.
All right.
Okay, welcome Simon and Gemma.
It's about the declaration of a climate emergency, point nine. So on them, I've been watching the news this week. On Monday, the National Farmers Union predicted that yields would be down by a third this year as extreme weather hit our crops. And the fields by my house in Bishopstone is saying exactly this, with cider production down to one-third, down one-third. Normally, in the situation with pork grain for Central Europe, but again, on the news, researchers showing that extreme drought in Central Europe is set to increase sevenfold. Tuesday, I heard the record for the highest temperature ever reliably recorded on earth has been broken, and that 10 of the hottest years in UK have been since 2002. At the same time, a study found that rising temperatures will cause more death than all infectious diseases. And Friday, extreme rainfall over the country led to flash flooding. M23 and M25 were closed due to what was described as biblical rain. Meanwhile, 19 people were rescued from a train in Sussex after the tracks were covered in the mud in a landslide. These were 100-year events, which are rapidly increasing in frequency. And on the same day, I read that 40 years of satellite data were shown that green and glaciers have shrunk so much. If global warming stopped today, the ice sheets will continue shrinking unstoppable. These glaciers contain five to six metres of sea level rise alone, and that's more than enough to give me a beachside property. And I live half a mile from the beach. Our climate has been relatively stable for the last 10,000 years. That's clearly no longer true. Until we reach net zero carbon emissions, our planet's going to become increasingly unpredictable. And once we reach this new normal, that's the world we have to adapt to living in, and there's no going back. In a recent survey of eight to 16-year-olds by BBC's Newsround, 80% said climate change is important to them. 58% said they're worried about the impact the climate change will have on their lives, and 64% don't believe that people in power are listening to them. Now, nearly 4,000 Seaford residents under 18, and therefore couldn't vote for our councillors, including my two children, Oliver and William. I just wanted to ensure you'd be thinking of these young residents when deciding whether or not to declare climate emergency, as they have the longest to live with the consequences of our collective inaction on this climate crisis.
Okay, thank you. Points well made. I think we'll be back to this when the agenda item nine is being debated.
Thank you.
So thank you for your input. Next was?
Becky Frankham.
Hello, thank you. Really, I just want to add to what Simon has so eloquently said in support of the declaration of the climate emergency. We're currently heading for a rising temperatures of four degrees above pre-industrial levels, which is going to mean a lot for devastation for people who live in this area. So we're talking about floods, mass migration, food scarcity, health issues, some of which we've already experienced. We're beginning to get a taste of, if you like, with the coronavirus. People are beginning to understand what it means to worry about where we get our food from, worry about how we live in harmony with the natural world. So really, I think, Simon summed it up so beautifully. But we in Seaford are at the front line. We're a coastal town, and we, like the rest of the UK, are very dependent on food imports from elsewhere. But we're also very in touch with our local farming and rural community, and should be doing the utmost to support them and support the amazing amount of biodiversity that we have in and around us, and in the national parks on our doorstep. And Seaford really attracts so many people, so many visitors to it because of its natural beauty and natural resources, walkers and cyclists. Really, I'm not sure that currently we do the most we can to promote that and make it really easy for people who want to enjoy the natural environment. We're on the avenue there, but how many people would know that? So I would really make a plea for declaration of the climate emergency and support of the initiatives that Mr Blackburn has already spoken about, so that Seaford can become a low-carbon community. And I think that would be good for the people of Seaford, good for the businesses of Seaford, and good for the planet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, these are all important and amplifying points. So we move ahead. Can I just ask that speakers do introduce new things as we move forward now? It's good to reinforce what someone else has said, but if there are new things to add in, please do so. Who's next? Councillor Cash?
I've got someone called Heidi, but I can't see anyone called Heidi.
There was a Harley House.
Harley House, was it that?
Hello, that's me.
Yeah, that's.
You don't sound like a Heidi, but you do look like Harley House.
Sorry about that, Harley House.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just with reference to item number seven, I was just wondering if it's possible, Mr Mayor, if we could get, I don't know if this is applicable on a Zoom meeting, if we could get suspension of standing orders so that I could be asked questions if the council has any questions to ask me. That's it, really.
We're looking to the clerk for this. I think it's difficult to know what to ask you. I think maybe you need to make a few more statements. I'm not clear at the moment. Are you on side or against?
No, I think, sorry, can I just say, I think what Harley House means that when we get to that item on the agenda, if any of the councillors have a question, he's just saying he's available to answer. If you're happy to suspend standing orders to do so.
Okay, and that's what, so can I have a name for Harley House? It's hard to call you Mr Harley House.
Hello, I'm Adam. Adam Harley.
Was that correct, Adam, what I?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to that when we get to that agenda item. Okay, thank you. Next councillor Cash is?
Andy Bridge, please.
Hello. My name's Andy from Abyss Brewing, referring to permission for concession holders to sell alcohol on the seaffront. We're a small two-man brewery. We began life under the Palam Arms in Lewis, and we are proposing to sell our products, our beer that we brew, 10 miles from Seaford on a seafront. And with that, we propose a challenge 25 policy as licences, and also a refundable beaker scheme to cut down the chance of any litter on the beach. And I just wanted to introduce myself and say, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and also invite anyone if they wanted to come to the brewery, if they had any further questions, they'd be very welcome. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think if, as we're talking about suspending standing orders during item seven, if the possibility is there, but we'll see how we go as we get to that point. Is that now everyone from the public gallery?
Clarissa Meek, please.
Clarissa Meek?
Meek, hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, okay. Mine was really just about item nine. You know, I really want to support what Becky and Simon said about the climate emergency. I mean, I think they've said everything that really I would want to say. I just want to add my support and say I think a lot of people feel like this in Seaford, and it's terribly, terribly important to declare a climate emergency. You know, it's extraordinary that a coastal town like ours has not done that yet. I can't believe that with rising sea levels and, you know, it's, I mean, it's plain for all of us to see what's happening. And I really would urge councillors to, you know, to vote for, to declare a climate emergency and try and make us a low-carbon, in fact, you know, zero-carbon town would be fantastic. So I just want to lend my support to Becky and Simon's points.
Okay, thank you.
That's very quick.
And just to say also, there have been two written representations saying the same thing during the course of the day about supporting the request for a climate change, the adopting a climate change emergency motion. So I think, is that everyone now from the public gallery?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, so thank you all for being with us. Clearly, all of you are welcome to stay for all of the meeting, but you have to have the discipline not to want to speak again.
Isabelle would like to speak, please.
Sorry, I saw a hand go up. Was it Helen? Did you put your hand up to speak?
Yes, hello, thank you. Helen Frederick.
Problem is having two screens, you kind of disappear off the end. Sorry, Helen, right.
I'm not going to say any more to what Simon and Becky and Clarissa have said, except a point of information that various groups across the town have recently formed Seaford Environmental Alliance, or SEAF for short, and that's very much a cooperative approach. So what's proposed in the motion is very much achievable even by existing groups, and we're already beginning to start initiatives off. So please feel assured that the town council wouldn't be relied upon for resources constantly. However, we do have an urgent need for a meeting space, which is very clear to the public. So if that could be considered in the future, that would be brilliant. Thank you.
Can I just, can I ask you a question? When you say meeting space, you need a meeting room or an open?
Yeah, I think what we need is a public presence within the town, and the town itself does lack community spaces. And, you know, really, if we're going to... Um, and, and you know, really, if we're going to start to bring about a significant change in the way that people see their environment, see their, um, their community, and to make that sustainable and make the transition, transition to zero-carbon future, which has all these threats within it, then we really need to start that conversation with the community immediately. And um, I think some of us, all of us really feel that a premises to be able to do that from while supporting the community would, would be really valuable.
So thank you for explaining, I misunderstood that meaning, meeting room, but I, I understand you've made it clear now. Okay, so thank you, everyone who's taken part. And now we'll move to the, the agenda. We're going, we move now to item four, uh, which is um the minutes of the meetings, and one or two of these minutes have got recommendations to bring forward. Um, unfortunately, the, the chair of the Community Services Committee is unwell. So can I ask councillor Linda Warhavens, the deputy chair of that committee, to take us through the um recommendations that come from the Committee Services Minutes of the 30th of July, please?
You're muted, Linda.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, the minutes were circulated, and uh, if the members of the, uh, the council are agreeable that we accept the minutes as, as read, thank you.
Yes, so can I just have a quick show of hands for the councillors present, that we accept that?
I can't be on the video, so can I just say yes on the mic if you don't mind?
That works, that works.
Thank you.
Yes, that, without counting, that's a substantial majority, so thank you. Um, and um, just to refer now to our, to Izzy, um, the, the, the specific recommendations, do they need to be voted on one by one, or is accepting the minutes enough to do that?
They, yeah, they're accepted as part of the minutes. There are some referrals that have then been put on as agenda items for this meeting.
Right, thank you. That brings us to, to 4.2, uh, which is the full council minutes. We simply are approving these as um the acceptable record of the council meetings on the 18th of June. So I'll propose that. Can I have a show of hands, the show was councillors in favour? Again, I'm saying significantly a majority, the 29th of July, I propose that we accept it as a correct record. Anybody against, I think one or two are voting, so, okay, that's, that's carried. The, um, just to look to Izzy now, under 4.2, so we've got 4.5 funds for general purposes. There are minutes to agree. The, the items, the seven recommendations to full council, are they, those are recommendations from finance and general purposes?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we accept the minutes as, as read and those recommendations that are in the M block.
Proposed, seconded. Uh, I think we have a show of hands for this. I, I think if um Izzy and Georgia could look at both screens, I can only see one screen at a time. To me, it looks like a substantial majority, but it's difficult to, uh, to count without seeing all the screens at once. But I, it's my view, this is that that's carried. You accepting this? Yes, carried. Um, 4.6 Gulf of the View, um, again, Chair, let's propose this.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to propose if we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, those in favour are saying they're doing that, yes? Right, so thank you. I see a, um, a chat message, someone. Ah, yes, and I guess someone's saying they'll put their, their message into a into a chat, okay, thank you. That brings us now to the, uh, to item five. And for those of you who've got the agenda in front of you, um, this is now going to page, uh, page 39, which is the, um, the mayor's update. And just to give Chanel a heads up, there will be a young mayor's update report following this. Uh, everything that I need to say is, is there in writing. I think just to say, I think I'm Seaford's first virtual mayor, and that it is a very unusual time. Um, but there are things that we've been able to do in terms of the charities initiative, uh, the, uh, the secret garden scheme that councillor Cash is running for us, which is clearly attracting a lot of attention. Um, uh, there have been socially distanced events in terms of the raising the Sussex Day flag on Forces Day, uh, the Victory in Japan Day. So the, my, my report is, is there. Um, um, I'm, I'm, can I recommend myself to, that my report be accepted?
Isabel says yes.
Yes.
Right, so the show of hands, you're content to accept the report that I've just presented? That looks to be a majority again, thank you. And now that moves us on to uh 5B and to our young mayor and to Chanel.
Thank you.
There you are, right. My screen, people keep moving around my screen, which is slightly confusing. Chanel, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all okay and keeping safe. Today I'm just going to be talking about my ideas for the future and what hopefully I'll be able to do. Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone who's been collecting crisp packets. Unfortunately, the air ambulance are no longer doing that due to COVID-19 with safe, uh, safety issues. I'm also going to be doing a, the 30-30 challenge for the anniversary of the 30th year of the ambulance. This is a good way to raise money for them. I just need to find a way to collect donations safely from people. Uh, for my challenge, I'm going to be doing a bike ride, which is going to be 30 miles with a group of my friends and James. Uh, that's going to be on the 30th of September. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
So any questions to the young mayor?
I've got one.
Uh, councillor Argent?
Um, did I, did I hear right that you're not no longer collecting crisp bags?
Yeah, they've had to stop doing that due to COVID-19.
Oh, yes, as I've got a sack load.
Yeah.
I, I suggest if you keep them long enough, they will be sterile by the time they're handed over. So, um, I think councillor Rutland would like to join in your bike ride, but on his motorcycle rather than on a bicycle, but uh. Does, does any, does anyone have any questions or suggestions for our young mayor? Uh, I would like to ask a question. How, how does it feel being the young mayor and being a virtual young mayor? Clearly, you've got a much better handle on the technology than I have as the old mayor. How, how do you feel in using social media at this time?
Well, I don't mind it, but it's more difficult to fundraise because I tried to set up a donation button on Facebook, but for some reason it wouldn't let me do that. And obviously, I can't do any like, uh, events or quizzes, so it's a bit more difficult to raise money, but I guess it'll just be more rewarding at the end of it.
I think if any councillors have got ideas about how Chanel could raise money or how, um, or any technical advice about how, um, the, the date on the young mayor's Facebook page might work, or with crowdfunding or whatever, I think. Um, you know, emails to Chanel with, with suggestions to her about that.
Yeah.
So, uh, okay, any, any, anyone else want to say anything to the young mayor? No. Okay, that's, thank you, thank you Chanel. Look forward to uh seeing more of you, hopefully seeing you face to face at some point before the end of the municipal year. Um, and then move on to item six, which is the district and county councillor update. Um, I'm interested to know whether we've had any engagement with the Lewis District Council on their business development initiatives. Any from district want to say anything? Uh, yeah, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, there's not a great deal to say. The district council are in talks and starting talks with the uh, COVID groups that have been set up across the district and in towns and villages, um, working out how they might carry on afterwards and, and support the community in different ways. Um, and also, I'm sure many of the councillors have seen their emails today regarding uh, the Seaford Health Hub and how it's unlikely to proceed at the Downs Leisure Site. As there has been a study that's identified the possibility of the scheme going ahead at the Seaford Medical Practice to include the Richmond Road car park.
Okay, thank you councillor Borman. Anyone else? Um, councillor, councillor Lord, do you have anything to add?
Um, thank you, Chair. No, um, councillor Borman is absolutely correct. Um, the scheme now looks like it's um, uh, washed out. And we're looking at alternative sites. To be honest, when we originally did this, uh, the study must be about, oh, two or three years ago, it was brought forward. The biggest problem is the fact that the um foundations required to build the hub on this particular site is in, on infilled ground, which will need a special type of foundation, which is called underreaming. And they're quite expensive. So in actual fact, if we do go ahead with the, which wherever it goes, whether the which is good for, for the town, the special foundations, they're called underreaming powered foundations. They're very, very expensive, and they probably cost more than to put the building up. But that's just a technical issue. Um, so whichever way they go for it, but let's just make sure, see if it gets a health up. Thank you.
They need improved health facilities in the town, wherever.
Thank you.
Any other comments, ones from district or counting? No? Okay, that leaves us down to item seven. Um, this is the seafront concession alcohol sale, one of three for this. And the report is agenda seven, which is on page 43, uh, in Tony Jackson's absence. Um, who is one of our officers going to present?
And I wondered whether, um, the vice chair of the Community Services Meeting, Linda Warhavens, sorry to put this on you again. I just wondered if you could just give an overview, um, from the Community Services Committee? Because obviously this was referred from that committee to full council, so whether you could give an overview on that?
Uh, yes, we had it before us at Community Services. And, um, and the committee, um, so, um, uh, majority of the committee, um, thought it best that something important as selling alcohol on the seafront should go to all members of the council. So this is why you've got it before you, uh, today. Um, uh, hopefully on the, um, uh, the councils, uh, councillors, um, you'd be able to read, you know, have read about the, uh, three concessions proposal, you know, people who have proposed to, um, have the, um, a licence on there. That would be only one who would win the concession. Um, and I understand that Tony visualizes that this will, um, is situated between the ice cream van um, and the new beach, beach huts. So it won't be sort of really visible from, um, the seafront road. And, uh, and I think the, um, uh, they will be open up to about eight o'clock in the evening, so it's not, so it's going to be late, um, evening. And, uh, and the licensees will, you know, will control the public and, uh, um, because if they don't, then they'll lose their licence, but then you'll have to go towards Lewis as well, licensing committee. So, uh, it's, um, you know, I think it deserves a trial. And if it works, it works. If it doesn't, then we don't, um, pursue it anymore. So it's open to members of the council.
I just checked that what we're being asked, the, the recommendation is to consider the requests by potential concession holders for permission from Seaford Town Council to apply to Lewis District Council for a pyramid to sell alcohol on Seaford Promenade. So we're asked whether we're willing to let the concession holders apply for licenses. Uh, is that implicit in that, as we're also being asked to consent to the, to the concession as a whole?
No, so that would go, that, what, what we, what we're asking tonight is council's consideration in general for selling of alcohol on, on the promenade. Um, but then the, through delegated powers, the Community Services Chair with the, um, the projects and facilities manager would look at the concessions that, that have come for, you know, deal with it as you would a normal, um, concessions contract. So, so tonight, the considerations from full council, whether, um, permission would be granted for, um, alcohol sales on the seafront. Um, and also to look at any sort of specific terms that the council would want, so like Linda said, about whether it being a trial period over, say, six weeks, um, and, and other things like that.
Okay, Mr Chek, so there isn't, is, so is this an, an actual recommendation from Community Services that this should, this can be, that the, these concessions, the concession can be awarded, or is this to take the, the sounding of the council about whether we are willing to do this?
I think, well, from Community Services, we're asking, um, all members of the council if they are agreeable um, to have, um, the selling of alcohol on the seafront. I mean, if members, uh, vote, you know, against it, then nothing, then it won't go ahead. But if members are for it, then we'll go to the next stage at Community Services.
So, just to check with Izzy again, so as we stand at the moment, there is no proposal for or against. So to move this forward, we either have to have someone propose we do or propose we don't, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we, tonight, we, we want to know if the council is happy that, um, um, that we have, um, alcohol being sold on the seafront.
There was a full referral, basically, from the Community Services to full council to make that decision on whether alcohol sales would take place on the seafront.
Uh, because it was felt that just the members of the Community Services, we felt that this needed to be a full council decision.
I think we just need, need to hear some discussion then of, um, what, what, what is, what's the councillor's opinion? And do we want to work towards a, an actual, um, resolution about what we do? I'm also conscious we've got Adam and Andy are willing to be resources to this if we, if we were to ask them. So councillors first, what, what's your view? Councillor Borman's going to hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, just a couple of points I'd like to make is back in 2007, when the planning permission went in, um, to put up, um, get rid of the Beachcomber pub. Seaford Town Council were actually objected to it, and part of those grounds was the fact of losing the last amenity of a pub on the seafront. Um, and secondly, when Seaford Neighbourhood Plan was going through, um, questionnaires and surveys with residents back in 2016, one of the questions asked of the residents was what would they like to see in Seaford? And a large number of people wanted to see pubs and bars along the seafront. So for this, I really think we do need to have, even if it's a trial and then it comes back to council to look at it for a permanent thing in the future, we really do need to put a bar on the seafront.
Okay, thank you councillor Borman. Uh, councillor Argent or councillor Brown?
Um, my view on it is that, uh, speaking, Mr Harley speaking earlier said he put a, um, deposit on any bottles or anything that were taken away, so they didn't litter the beach. So there's one little item that might help.
Okay, councillor Brown?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I've got some, um, serious concerns about this. First of all, we've already turned down one recommendation to sell gin on the seafront, um, about, I think, two council meetings ago. Um, there are no toilet facilities down in the area that they're proposing to sell this alcohol from. And therefore I'm worried that we'll get an excess of human waste, because if you drink, sometime you've got to go. Where, where can you go? There's no toilet. So they'll go along the seafront wall, and we'll get complaints about the smell and the pollution. Um, I'm also worried about excess, uh, increased beach pollution. We have a lot of pollution on the beaches, it is, you know, and I can't see that we really need it anymore. Um, I'm a bit worried that the, uh, one of them proposed, proposals is to open it till 9pm. And immediately opposite to Bonnington Promenade, there's a very large care home. And immediately opposite Bonnystep Promenade, there's a very large care home. And it's full of people with dementia and things like that. And I think that they, you know, they need their peace and quiet. I think that there's a possibility of an increase in unreasonable behaviour when people start to drink, particularly when they're sitting in the sunshine. And also, there are nine pubs in the town already. And if we put up another one on the beachfront, we will cause them to lose some of their custom. Thank you very much.
I've seen a hand up from councillor Rutland, a hand up from councillor Ally Hyver. Councillor Rutland first. And councillor Cash, if you could watch the other screen to make sure I'm not missing people that way. Councillor Rutland?
I quite often go for a swim first thing in the morning. And when we've had a busy day on the seafront the night before, there is quite often a lot of evidence on the beach that people have brought their own alcohol along. So I think you're not going to stop alcohol coming to the beach. It's much better that it's actually under a controlled situation. And I think the idea from Harley House with a deposit on the bottles and things like that, or deposit on the glasses and things like that, I think much more responsible way of controlling what is already happening. And at the moment, it's happening under no control whatsoever. So, you know, I think the situation is already happening on a nice busy day on the seafront. But it's had some control and some evidence about that.
Hey, thank you councillor Rutland. Councillor Ally Hyver?
Yes, on my opinion, I think in Seaford, we are not ready for the licence, licence of pub in the seafront, because the small community family, lot of family children, they walk around. Everyone who know, I mean, I know some friend come from Brighton and other towns, because it's nice and peaceful. We never had any problem with drinking, like we'd never call the police or anything. Lot of people working with the children, babies. And it's Seaford, we've got a nice place for the family. And we've got nice car park as well, lot of people come outside. And I think we are not ready like Brighton or Eastbourne for the licence, in my opinion. Because it's small town, we clean and we never had a problem in the seafront. And I think it's not a good idea for the licence part in the seafront. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cash, do you see anybody else looking to speak?
Yes, councillor Everden.
I think I've done, I think councillor Webb, so councillor Everden?
Hi, yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm not actually against a bar on the seafront. If you were talking about putting it into a property on Marine Parade or on the Estland in one of the buildings or having a building there. What I'm really, what I have concerns about is having it actually on the beach, which is along the footpath of what I call the promenade, which is heavily pedestrianised and a lot of footfall, a lot of families. That's a real family route to go up and down the beach. I don't think that a bar is appropriate for there. But if it was on, in a property on the seafront road, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Where it's situated is there's a lot of families that walk up and down through that all the time. And there's, the community services are talking about having like a table and chair area so that the patrons would be seated. But you would have families actually walking through what is essentially a bar. And I don't think that's a great idea. And bars do bring the possibility of some antisocial behaviour. And I also think that this is probably not a good time with a lot of the pubs that have got in the town at the moment struggling post-COVID and trying to attract as much business as possible. Having a bar on the beach that may draw it away from them, because a lot of them are fighting, have been there a long time and paying their rates a long time and contributed a lot to the town. They're really trying to stay open and keep going. And I don't think this would help them. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Webb?
Sorry about that. I feel I'm getting a bit confused here. I was getting under the impression that this was a concession to sell alcohol, not necessarily to open a bar on the beach. Which or either is it?
Councillor Warraven?
Wait, can I, I'm muted, am I? Yeah. Yeah, it's, I think the two of prospective people who are interested are to sell their own beer. Where it will be is as a, along the Bonnystep Parade between the ice cream van and the beach huts, where it's the widest part of the seafront. So yes, there will be, I think, like one of them, it would be, you know, it would be taken away each evening, as I understand. But it's not actually going to be on the beach. It's going to be, you know, back from the beach, as I say, at the widest point of Bonnystep Parade, roughly where the fish and chips were last year.
Yep. Well, I mean, the conversation is getting fogged up. To my mind, it's somebody asking for a concession to sell a beer or alcohol on the beach, which is, we're not, people are getting fogged up with the fact that there's going to be some sort of mad bar with people getting drunk. It's for people to have the facility to buy alcohol on the beach.
I think, I think what was said at community services, these are select beers are not on the cheap end of the scale, so.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. That's what I'm trying to emphasise, is it's going to be a facility for people who are on the beach to walk up, purchase a beer. And we're getting a little bit mixed up that people are getting the opinion that it's going to be full of rowdy hooligans sitting there all day drinking and getting boozed up. I think we need to get away from that. People are asking for a concession, we're able to sell home microbrewery beer on the beach. It's going to be a little bit more upmarket than a pub having a disco and a punch up on Friday night, eh?
That's right. Can I say something?
There's only councillor who's not spoken once yet, as every councillor has had an opportunity to speak.
May I say something?
Yeah, councillor Cash and then councillor Lord.
I support, I support completely what councillor Everden said. I agree with everything she said. I think that you should also realise that at the meeting, the community service meeting, we did say that we would approve a licence for the Salt's Cafe. And therefore there would be a facility in that area for alcohol to be sold, but in that area. And that was passed during the community service meeting. I think you agree with that, councillor Warraven.
Councillor Lord hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mer. Yes, I think councillor Webb has answered my query. Because I thought with it being a bar, it would be fenced off with tables and chairs outside it. Is that the case or not?
Sorry, can I answer that?
Please.
Okay, councillor Everden?
Yes, in the meeting.
Sorry, wait, hold on. I just see Isabel.
I just want to jump in and just to say that we're really not even at that stage yet. This is quite an early on stage that we're at.
Okay.
Where it's just to seek council's consideration on whether now alcohol sales on the beach, there isn't.
Thank you Isabel, thank you. I just thought we were voting on like a bar with tables and chairs and a fence, what we have on Brighton Seafronts.
But that's what the council would then need, if the council was, say, to agree to the sale of alcohol.
And then it would, yeah, okay, I understand. Thank you Isabel. Thank you, Mr Mer.
Councillor Everden?
Yeah, so during the community and services meeting, I was quite specifically asked that question. Because one of the things I wasn't comfortable with, with someone selling alcohol, it's all very well saying that they're going to do, you know, age checks or whatever. But if you have someone going up and buying alcohol for a group of people, and you don't know what the group, the age of the group of people. And also, the idea that people could buy the alcohol and then move to any part of the beach or any area of the beach with the bottles and things like that. And that was, that was something that I queried, if that was what the arrangement was going to be. And one of the applicants said, and I think it was Andy, and then there was another chap who was in a camper van on the beach. And they both said that what they were talking about was a seating area where they would have, they would sell alcohol and people would remain in that seating area and not be taking that alcohol away out on the beach. And they would be able to see who it was sold to and make sure it wasn't then being passed to minors. So that's a question I asked quite specifically in that meeting.
Okay, councillor Borman, then I think we want to be moving on to resolve this. We've had a lot of discussion around this and I think we need to decide in principle whether we're prepared to go ahead with this. And beyond that, then there's the detailing. Councillor Borman?
Thank you. I can't believe that some councillors are saying they don't want this because the beach is for families, yet they have agreed that the Salt's Cafe, which is right next to a children's play area, can sell alcohol. As I proposed at the very start, I proposed that we
Okay, councillor Borman, you've.
This on a trial basis.
Okay, so Borman, we're hearing only parts of what you're saying. And I think what councillor Borman was saying that should be on a trial basis. Is that right? So.
Can I just, sorry, councillor Borman, was that a proposal? Did you want to repeat?
Yeah, I proposed that we accept this on a trial basis. And then it comes back to full council for full discussion again.
I think councillor Rutland is seconding that. Is that correct? Right, that's councillor.
Councillor Edson wants to speak.
Councillor Edson, then for councillor Brown?
Could we have a recorded vote, please?
Yes, can we have a vote, councillor Edson?
I'm most reluctant, but I think as it's a trial, we can take a chance. And I think that, you know, our people that want to open a bar must understand that, that, you know, if it's not going well as far as the town council is concerned, then they'll have to understand that that's got to be the end of it. That's, that's why I'm reluctantly agreeing to it.
Okay, councillor Cash?
Could you specify what's a trial period, yes, please?
Councillor Borman, how long's a trial period?
Sorry, I think that's open for discussion, but the papers do say a trial such as six weeks. So I think once we agree, can agree to it, we can then set some conditions.
So would your proposal you've made be that this be, could this be agreed, but with a trial period of six weeks? Councillor Borman? Yeah, yes, I think there's a hand up for yes. So we have a proposal which has been seconded.
Can I just, sorry, can I just ask, this does actually is just a recommended, recommendation to go to Lewis District Council, is it not?
Yeah, so the town council doesn't actually grant a licence. It grants permission for that concession to go and seek the permissions that they would need from Lewis District Council.
Okay, so we have something proposed and seconded. I think we've had quite a lot of time on this and we've gone into the detail rather than the actual principle. So unless someone has an amendment to put, I propose to take this to the vote. And we've already had a request for a named vote. So the.
Have I go through the roll call?
Yeah, just to be clear, that the proposal is that this be, that we are willing to let concession holders request permission from Lewis District Council for a trial period of six weeks. Are we agreeing that's the resolution? Yes? Yeah, I think everybody's saying yes, that's the resolution. Okay, so you call the roll, please.
Okay, and just to confirm, if you could just say for, against or abstain? So councillor Dill?
Against.
Councillor Argent?
Councillor Argent?
Councillor Dave Argent?
Against.
Sorry, could you repeat?
Against.
Councillor Borman?
For.
Councillor Brown?
Against.
Councillor Cash?
Against.
Councillor Edson?
For.
Councillor Everden?
Against.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
Against.
Councillor Vanuma Hayder?
Against.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
Against.
Councillor Lord?
Against.
Councillor Meek?
Against.
Councillor Moreland?
Against.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Rutland?
For.
Councillor Warraven?
For.
And councillor Webb?
For.
But that's not carried.
Okay, so this for the minutes, for the record, that resolution is not carried. Now we move on to the next agenda item. Can I just ask that people who aren't muted at the moment can re-mute themselves? We're now moving to agenda item eight. And this is a report presented by Isabel Moreland. Isabel?
Yes, sorry, the covering report, I'm just going to find it, sorry, page number forty-five. And so, yeah, this is for the council to consider granting an application, well, a licence for the use of the town council's coat of arms. So this goes with the town council's coat of arms policy. And so it's just for the council to consider tonight.
So the recommendation is that to consider granting a license, the applicant the licence to use the town council's coat of arms and to consider whether any specific terms of use or limitations to be set out within the licence, if it be granted. Someone like to speak to this? Okay, so Edson?
From me, here's councillor Edson.
Yeah, it does say, and other items such as food menus. And I don't think that it would be right on the food menus. You know, I think it's okay to use it on the pub sign, because that is directly connected to the sink ports historically. But menus and other things, I think it'd be plastered all over the place. I think that's just pushing it too far. Yep, pub sign, but.
Okay, sign but no menus. Someone else want to make a contribution? Councillor Cash?
I agree with what John said.
Oh, that's the pub sign but nothing else. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you. One thing, usually the licence we've agreed has been to not for profit. Obviously, this is for, to be paid for from a organisation. I was looking at the policy that states after three years, if they don't renew, but they can carry on kind of using it, and it's down to us to do a cease and desist letter and go through, which is going to start costing us lots of money. I think we do need to look at our policy and put some clauses in that if they do stop and don't renew, that they need to do it instantly or we make charges to them.
Just want to add to that, if that's okay.
To the officers?
I also add to that, that I didn't put as part of my report, and that the, we have to reapply. I haven't got the, it in front of me, Georgia, you might remember the term. But we have to reapply to register the coat of arms, which comes up.
Twenty twenty-seven?
Yes. So that's actually will creep up on us. So I'm just thinking in terms of it being an actual pub sign, it's quite a sort of permanent fixture. There's quite a lot that goes with that.
Councillor Warraven?
Thank you Chair. I must admit, I don't think I'm very happy about the coat of arms being used at all. I don't know, I just, I just think it, in one way, I feel it degrades the coat of arms. That's just my personal view, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it. Thank you.
Okay, someone else? Anyone else? Councillor Brown, councillor Meek?
Yes, thank you Chair.
I'm not sure that this policy was designed for commercial organisations like pubs. If you allow one pub to put it on the sign, you've got to allow all of them in Seaford to put it on the sign. And I agree with what councillor Wallraven was saying, I think it degrades the coat of arms by using it like that. And I would be very much against allowing it in these circumstances.
Councillor Meek?
Sorry, I was just going to play devil's advocate and say we are going to be trying to raise money, so.
You know, but the reputation of £300 or whatever, it's not a strong balance. So there's any other councillor who wants to say something? Otherwise, I think this needs to be.
Councillor Brown wants to have another word.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm very much against earning money for Seaford Town Council, but in this case, as I say, I'm against that for the sake of £300.
Thank you. So my sense is the balance of the meeting says that we would not want to do this, but I think we would need to have a resolution to make that clear. But someone wants to, either we do or we don't, so we can get this voted through. Again, this is going to need to be a recorded vote, given the numbers. Councillor Wallraven?
I propose that we don't accept this, you know, the usage of the coat of arms.
And we propose we do not accept it. Okay, so
I second that.
Seconded, so okay, proposed and seconded. Unless someone wants a counterproposal, I think we move that to the vote. So can we have a recorded vote on this, please, just because we make sure we see everybody?
Can I just confirm, the recorded vote would need to be resolved? Or you mean I just do a roll call?
I think we said earlier in the meeting, we might need a recorded vote generally. So, okay, roll call or recorded vote, what do you want?
I don't think anybody's asked a recorded vote, Chair.
Roll call, then.
Okay. And so just to confirm that the proposal that's on the table is to not give the licence to the applicant. Okay, so councillor Adil?
For.
Councillor Argent?
Against.
Let's just be clear, so you want them to have a licence, is that right councillor Argent?
No.
Okay.
Could you put the, explain the resolution again? The resolution is not to go ahead. So voting for it means it's voting not to go ahead. Right, okay, let's carry on.
Councillor Borman?
Sorry, I thought that was coming later.
No, councillor Borman?
Borman.
Sorry.
I don't think she can hear.
So councillor Borman, do you hear us?
All right, for.
Councillor Brown?
For.
Councillor Cash?
Abstained.
Councillor Edson?
Or.
Councillor Evedon?
For.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
For.
Councillor Van Uma Hayder?
For.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
For.
Councillor Lord?
For.
Councillor Meek?
For.
Councillor Moreland?
Abstained.
Councillor Reed?
Or.
Councillor Rutland?
Or.
Councillor Wallraven?
Or.
Councillor Webb?
For.
So the motion is carried that we do not accept, we don't, we will reduce the application for the vote of our coat of arms. Right. Okay, thank you. We now move to item number nine, which is the Climate Change Working Group interim report. And there was a copy of this published with the minutes for the meeting. I think the, what we might do is to ask councillor Meek, who's the chair of the working party, to introduce this. And we work it on from there. Councillor Meek?
Hi. I hope you've all had a bit of a chance to look at the amended version and got the email in which I explained that unfortunately we hadn't really had enough kind of interaction with officers to understand their reservations about some aspects or some of the points we were trying to get voted on. So we've since put in this amended recommendations to try and address some of those concerns. I've since heard from Izzy that there are still some concerns about some of our items. And I just wonder, Chair, if what we wanted to do was perhaps, if we, I wondered if we could vote on separately on the items, particularly items one, two, three, and then could I come in again and just say something that has occurred to me which might affect the subsequent items? Is that possible to do?
I think there's no reason not to take the items one by one. I think just to explain to people in the, in the public gallery that during the course of the day, a revised amendment was circulated to councillors, which is the amendment that councillor Meek is talking about. So we have an option in front of us, we could take the items in the amendment, one by, one to three, but actually, the report in front of us has, or has its own recommendations. So just looking to our officers now, do we have to, is the, because we have an agenda item circulated, do we need to put that item to the meeting before we can take an amendment?
No, so the recommendations that have been resubmitted by the Climate Change Working Group actually include the recommendations of the officer's report. So it's almost, it's like an entire revision. Am I right in thinking that, councillor Meek?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
So, yeah, and it would be by what proposals on the table?
So everyone's clear that what's intended is that the recommendations that are there as a report thirty-nine twenty, agenda item nine, dated to today's date, page forty-seven, page forty-seven, is now superseded by the working party's amendment.
So we I just add, I think, Georgia, you were able to put that on a shared screen so that people can just have a moment to probably look, just in case.
I think that's a good idea, so we see what, so just to make it clear that is everybody, everyone content that we don't take a vote on the recommendations as put out in the report thirty-nine twenty, but we do move to discuss and vote on the amendment to the recommendations that George is about to put on the shared screen? Is everyone content with that?
I think that is the process that we have to go through, Robbie, in that order.
That we would be taking proposals?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so we're not taking what's in report nine, we're taking whatever, what's about to come on the screen from Georgia.
But I think if I, can I just propose that we maybe have this on the screen for a short time and just to familiarise ourselves with it and then maybe have, go back to non-shared screen to have discussion, because obviously it's quite difficult to then see people. Okay, Chair?
Yes, I think that's a good suggestion.
So can everyone see the screen share, sorry?
A little bit, but we can see it. That should be fine.
Does everyone have enough reading time now?
It will be difficult.
Number of people have a printed copy anyway. Shall we go back to the gallery view then? Councillor Lord?
Yes, good evening, Mr Mer, good evening councillor Meek. I would like to thank councillor Meek for excellent job he's done in producing this report. It's very thorough, very comprehensive, and I think he has done an excellent job along with the rest of the team. However, the recent weeks have found that the green policy, which I think is absolutely fantastic in carbon reduction, doesn't apply to Seaford. Because the last six, seven weeks, Seaford's have been cluttered up with cars down the seafront, down the side roads, cricket field road, college road, and every other road you can possibly mention coming about a hundred or 150 yards from the seafront. So therefore, although I support the recommendation wholeheartedly, perhaps some appendix could be written into this very, very comprehensive report and say, perhaps to deter people, as you do in the centre of London, with a charge going to central London, perhaps we could deter people coming to Seaford. I bumped into somebody on the seafront and I literally bumped into them, I said, are you local? Oh, yeah, yeah, we're local. Oh, that's good, yeah, we're from Maidstone. They brought their family down from Maidstone, the place is literally cluttered up with camper vans, cars coming from everywhere apart from Seaford. The Seaford people can't get down to the beach. So perhaps, as a thought, a deterrent would be to start charging people, as you do in London, to go through central London with a car parking charge. And that car parking charge, albeit half the seafronts, for the Martilla Tower going down to Splash Point, it belongs to Seaford, the rest of it belongs to Lewes District Council. Perhaps we could charge them a carbon charge so that the people of Seaford could be rid of these carbon emissions which is coming to Seaford. And it is absolutely ridiculous, that the people of Seaford, who, some of my constituents can't get down to the beach, because they can't park the car, albeit they should cycle down a walk. But I think something which could be taken into consideration is very, very comprehensive report. Thank you, Mr Mer, and thank you councillor Meek, for your very, very comprehensive report, I think it's excellent.
The suggestion is that councillor Meek might want to take it back to the working group for further consideration. Councillor Meek?
Just in answer to councillor Lord, yeah, be assured that we have talked about this in the working party, and we're also, we are very aware that on numerous occasions in the past, Seaford Town Council has opted not to make charges for car parking along the seafront and that most parking in, within Seaford is free. This is with the intention of helping traders within the town and also encouraging people to come to the town. So we do have a bit of a contradiction here. Personally, I would like to see less people travelling by car. And actually, some things that the Climate Change Working Party have been suggesting and dealing with is trying to see how we can encourage people to use public transport, cycling and walking, as you rightly point out. But I think we can take this all on board. I think these are things that we will be able to pursue in the fullness of time when maybe we've declared a climate emergency, we can then get into initiatives as to how to address carbon reduction in the town. Thank you.
Another, I think we have other councillors speaking before anybody gets to go to us.
Councillor Borman?
Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I wanted to iterate as well that this was a really thorough report. I learnt lots in it and I was very impressed with what's in there. I was especially interested in the idea of the burial site up at South Hill Barn. That could be an interesting option, I was just worried about, obviously digging in the chalk could be quite, but I think the whole concept of that, I'm just very impressed with how everything could be looked at, different options and everything. One of my concerns was in, on page forty-eight, one point six, regarding about strategic objectives, where it says, will take place when a new town clerk is settled in. How long is settled in? What is actually defined by settled in? I wanted a bit of clarification on that because that could be months, that could be years. And obviously, we really want to get on with doing the environmental works and working with other different groups in Seaford. So I wanted a bit of clarification, please.
I would imagine settling in means completing their induction period, but I don't know that. Anyone else with a contribution? I don't see anybody else. Councillor Lord, do you want to come back in again, then, if nobody else wants to go? Councillor Lord?
It's only a very quick one. Thank you very much councillor Meek for considering my proposal for car parking charges. Thank you. Very nice report, thank councillor Meek.
Thank you. So I think now we go back to where we were a few moments ago. Councillor Meek was saying that we might take the amendment to the recommendations one by one. And I think that's probably the way to do it now. So recommendation, so recommendation one is to note the contents of the working party's update report and appendices. So I don't know, we have to vote on noting something, but it might be as well to actually confirm that we have done that.
We should do that.
Yes. Hands up or roll call? How do we do this?
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Thank you.
Okay, so recommendation one is to note the contents of the working party's update report and appendices. So councillor Adil?
Councillor Adil?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You vote yes, okay?
Yes.
Councillor Argent? Councillor Argent?
You're muted, David.
It's all for dramatic effect, really. So perhaps you could do a thumbs up for yes and a thumbs down for no. I think we're saying that's a yes. I think I'll accept that as enough of an indication.
Councillor Borman?
Yes, noted.
Councillor Brown?
Yes, noted.
Councillor Cash?
Yes.
Councillor Edson?
Yes.
Councillor Evedon?
Yes.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
Yes.
Councillor Van Uma Hayder?
Yes.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
Yes.
Councillor Lord?
Yes.
Councillor Meek?
Yes.
Councillor Moreland?
Yes.
Councillor Reed?
Yes.
Councillor Rutland?
That's a yes for me.
Councillor Wallraven?
Thank you.
Councillor Webb?
Yes.
Okay, so the item one on the amendment is now carried, the report is noted. Now we move to item two. I've gone and lost councillor Meek again. Councillor Meek, would you want to propose that item two be carried?
I propose that we, that the town council declares a climate emergency.
Someone to second that?
Seconded.
Right, okay, that's seconded by councillor Cash. So we go to a roll call again.
Okay, councillor Adil?
For.
Councillor Argent?
Or.
Councillor Borman?
For.
Councillor Brown?
For.
Councillor Cash?
For.
Councillor Edson?
For.
Councillor Evedon?
For.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
For.
Councillor Van Uma Hayder?
For.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
For.
Councillor Lord?
For.
Councillor Meek?
For.
Councillor Moreland?
For.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Rutland?
For.
Councillor Wallraven?
For.
Councillor Webb?
For.
But that's carried, the council will declare as a climate emergency in order to identify this council recognition of the climate and environment crisis facing the world.
Yay!
I won't say you should have asked to speak at that point, but never mind, but yes, it's carried. Item number three, councillor Meek, do you want to do the same again?
Well, yes, I would like to do the same again and taking into consideration councillor Honeyman's point. This is something that Honeyman's point. This is something that officers advised we could write into council policy so that when we do get a new town clerk, which I have to say will enable things to move forward much easier. But notwithstanding that, I think we should agree this proposal because it kind of writes in stone that we will look at the strategic objectives properly when we have that opportunity. So I propose that we agree to item three.
Someone to second that? Councillor Warraven, are you seconding or asking to speak? Seconding?
Seconding.
Seconding. Right, proposed and seconded. A roll call again then.
Okay, so councillor Adil?
Can I please have the statement for this of what?
Yes, so the proposal is to agree that when the council's strategic objectives are reviewed, a new objective aimed at tackling and raising awareness of climate change be included.
Four.
Councillor Arjun?
Four.
Councillor Borman?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Cash?
Four.
Councillor Edson?
Four.
Councillor Everden?
Four.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
Four.
Councillor Anuma Hayder?
Four.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
Four.
Councillor Lord?
Four.
Councillor Meek?
Four.
Councillor Moreland?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Rutland?
Four.
Councillor Warraven?
Four.
Councillor Webb?
Four.
So that is carried. Now, before we move to item four, I need to say from the chair that no matter how supportive we are for the rest of these resolutions, that the council has taken a major hit to our income, that with the view closed, the golf course not in use, we are a long way behind the income we expected to have, which means we have a year, to finish this year, we have a very tight budget situation. And also in terms of managing the budget, we've had to furlough staff. We're in a position where we have, I think it's fair to say, almost nothing tangible we could commit to this from the town council. As Chair, I would want to be, the mayor, I want to be as supportive as possible, but we can't commit what we haven't got and we've got less as time goes forward. And who knows what COVID will do in terms of what we're allowed to open between now and the end of the year. So I think I want to make it clear that though I would want to be fully supportive of this, we need to be able to say to the town that we, because of other things we've had to close, we've not got the funds to do anything extra. So I think provided councillor Meek can explain to us that these things could be done with voluntary effort and not need really any councillor time and certainly no council money, we could proceed. But I can't, I'm strongly committed to the council's need to do all of these things, but we are in an unprecedented situation and we are in, we are going to be in difficulties if we don't save every penny possible, councillor Meek. Sorry, that's a bit of a grim introduction, but that's the reality.
Thank you, Chair. Items, I take exactly on board what you were saying and as you will know, Mr. Mayor, we have worked hard in the Climate Change Working Party to look at ways we can address finance and how we can address ways of raising finance through climate means. And I think we are on the way to doing that, to addressing those problems. But can I just refer to the next, of the next four points? Isabel came back to me and on three of the points, she said, we, town council and officers can't, the town council can't delegate things except to an officer or to a committee, which is a very pertinent point and one I hadn't kind of completely grasped. And so I do have a proposal that a way around this is the possibility that we could make a climate change committee within council, which means that presumably then the committee members can work on things just as they do with other committees and come up with suggestions. And so therefore delegation can be given to that committee to do some of that work with the voluntary associations and movements that we've already got springing up in the town. And that would mean that it wouldn't take officer time so much because the committee could be doing, in effect, the work that the Climate Change Working Party has been doing, but it would be more of a, an established committee through which the town council could delegate some of those duties. Is that something?
Yeah, I'd like to hear officers' view on this, but to say to begin with that the issue is still the current, the one I talked about before, that a committee needs officer time. It's not possible to have a council committee without officer time there in the meeting and involved in agendas and things to prepare for it. So even that is not a nil cost. Isabel?
Yeah, that was what I was going to say basically, that obviously committees need to have an officer presence. And there's obviously a lot of other factors to setting up a committee, such as how the committees are called. The council would have to look at fitting that into its committee schedule that it already has. And also just the fact of with the previous recommendation that we've done, this is the sort of stuff that would come in under that strategic objective so that you would have, that would, that would then, that would then be something adopted by the council, having had all of this looked into and it being worked out whether that strategic objective can be moved forward. Wanted to put that out there.
Chair?
Does have any other things that they want to say?
Councillor Cash?
Are we on the agenda item on our mapping project?
Yes. In fact, we're on the next three, well, the next four agenda items.
I dig that one then. It is so unambitious in one sense, but so important that I would like us tonight to try and find some resolution in wording which will take that through because if we're going to wait for it to come out under the strategic review, the whole of the other groups working in Seaford will have moved on. You know, they're ready to go, the volunteer base, they're anxious to help. We're not going to be short of people who are going to help us through and get the mapping project off the ground. We've had very good responses to the consultation document. People really want it to happen in Seaford. We've heard what Keith Blackburn and Charlie Grimble has said, they're there to support as well. Surely we can come up with some wording tonight which will meet our concerns and means we mustn't abandon an essential but quite simple, a ripped opening project. It would, I think it would be so disappointing if we come out of the meeting tonight having said that we declare a climate emergency and then do nothing. I think that would be very disappointing, except to recommend to go for strategic review.
Georgia and then councillor Brown and then councillor Borman?
Yes, sorry, Chair. I just wanted to maybe try and get some clarity as to, so with this recommendation, what is it that we're asking the council to agree to? Because I can see obviously it's about beginning work with community groups on the Green Corridors mapping project. But are we asking the council to agree to spend money on that or is it just to use kind of the knowledge that councillors have to put into that project? Because if that's the case, there's no reason, we're not delegating anything to the party, we're just agreeing that it's like a knowledge transfer basically, isn't it? So maybe, maybe if councillor Meek or someone who knows could just expand a little bit more on what it is the council would be agreeing to.
So before we move any further, there are several people with their microphones not muted. So you need to mute the last to come in. The councillor Meek, do you want to respond to what Georgia's just said?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just that we want to get Seaford Town Council to acknowledge that we are going to work with local groups. Otherwise, as councillor Cash has just said, we will have declared a climate emergency and actually we're not committing to doing anything about it at all. And it was a point raised a long time ago, back in October, when it was first mooted about making a, declaring a climate emergency, that declaring a climate emergency wasn't worth the paper it was written on if you didn't actually do anything about it. So I think we need to be seen to be being proactive, to be engaging with the local community. I'm not suggesting that it means committing any finances to it at all. But what it is doing, it is saying, it is showing that Seaford Town Council has made a verbal commitment to work with people in the community. And I think that gives a profile to the whole climate change issue and that encourages local voluntary organisations to work with their council. And okay, I can understand there might be some officer time, I'm not denying that. But I think that if we can delegate in some way, if we can try and delegate some duties to the Climate Change Working Party, either through making it a committee or giving it some kind of powers to take those things forward at no cost, then it's only going to increase the profile of Seaford Town Council, having declared an emergency, and it's going to enable better communication with voluntary groups and organisations and with the Seaford Community Partnership, who are going to hopefully be fundraisers on behalf of the voluntary organisations in Seaford.
I wonder if one way to adjust this is for item four to read, to agree that the working party begin to work with community groups. Councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I endorse what you say about funding. There aren't, there are no funds available at the moment to support most of these initiatives. Although the initiatives are very good and the report's very well written. We also have a very competent working group that's done all this work so far. And as councillor Meek pointed out, they should start to liaise now with Seaford Community Partnership. And I think the way to take this forward is for the council to agree that the working group carry on their work as it is at the moment and get as many groups on board as possible and then come back with another report a bit later on in the year.
Councillor Brown, councillor Everden?
Yeah, I just want to point out that councillor Borman's camera's not on, but she's put in chat that she'd like to speak and she's been waiting a while.
Okay, okay, Georgia and then councillor Borman?
I just wanted to stay the clarity really. I mean, it's obviously not the officers that are against what the working party is trying to propose, it's just trying to understand what it is that the council's being asked to agree to. And I mean, from what I've heard you say, I can't see that there is any need for delegated powers because really it's no different to say any other outside body or any other partnership work. And what we're saying is we have a group of councillors who would like to work with other groups in our local community to achieve something for the town. At this stage, I can't see any need for, you know, having to look to go to a committee status or delegating any powers to anyone. But I think what we would just say is obviously if that working party and those groups could keep an open communication channel with officers. So, you know, we become aware if there is going to be any need for officer time or any sort of spend and then we can be involved in that. But obviously day to day, it would be the working party driving this with the other community groups. So I think to say kind of having to look at ways to get around this, actually, you know, it's fine that we don't need to look at, look at going beyond what's recommended.
Okay, thank you, Georgia. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, my connection's unstable, which is why my camera's off. I think obviously Keith Blackburn and Charlie Grimble spoke very well in public participation, explaining how Seaford Community Partnership have done such a huge amount of work and actually that's who we should be supporting. And there is no financial cost to the council. So I think what the recommendation should be is that as a council, we should be supporting Seaford Community Partnership and all that they're doing. And then there's no cost to the council because they've also got the Martello Rotary and all their skill base. And if I'm wrong, and we could open up to allow Charlie and Keith to speak further to clarify things if need be. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Borman. And I do think that the two things we're talking about aren't opposed to each other in terms of the working party could be given a bit more remit. And they could, part of that linking then with the community groups include the partnership and various groups in the town. The other point I want to make is there isn't any, this is not a question of what the officers are trying to oppose. What, all that's happening is the officers are making a statement about financial reality. It's not that they have got, taken a stance on climate change, it's simply, it's their duty to tell us there isn't any money and we can't commit any money. So it's not a question of whether they're for or against the recommendations. They are doing what they are required to do, which is to say we haven't got the money. Okay, let's move ahead. Councillor Edson's going to hand up. If anybody's off my screen and you want to speak, you'll need to flag it up to somebody who can see you. Councillor Edson?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Now I ask the meeting to consider an amendment to amendment four.
What would the amendment be?
Well, if we could remove the words, "As small scale financial costs end", and therefore it reads, "to agree to begin work with community groups on the Green Corridors Mapping Project, which has already received community support. The project was devised by the working party after discussion with other interested community groups who were asked to contribute ideas in support of a major community lottery bid. The bid covers our area and could bring substantial funding to local environmental projects." It removes the wording about financial costs.
And I think if we were to make it clear that the "we" is the working party, not the whole council, that makes it clearer again.
And could I also suggest that we would change it to engage with? So it's just really clear, like again, what Georgia's already said as well, that when we're talking about to begin work, we're talking about to begin that engagement and that, that driving forward of the project.
Yeah, I think we're getting thumbs up from the working party chair. So anybody who's not spoken yet? Otherwise councillor Edson's back in again. Okay, councillor Edson?
So we changed the wording to agree to begin engaging with community groups.
I think if Georgia could retype this so we could see it, I think it's to agree the working party can engage with community groups on the Green Corridors Mapping Project, which already has received community support and the rest of the year, the resolution as is. To agree that the working party engage with community groups on the Green Corridors Mapping Project, which has already received community support, and then the rest of the resolution as it reads now.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody onside for that? Councillor Edson's going to hand up?
Oh, sorry. Let's let the blood flow.
Okay, councillor Lord, you had a hand up? So it's waving. Okay, I think we have a resolution. I think as soon as we can see that. Councillor Meek, are you content? Okay, if you're looking in the chat, you'll see the revised amendment developing in front of you. So that's in the chat now. If you look to agree that the working party engage with community groups in the Green Corridor, of course, this, it does then necessarily involve the Seaford Partnership. So that is the revised resolution. So councillor Meek, are you content to propose that?
I am, thank you.
Someone to second that? Okay, councillor Edson? Okay, so we're back to a roll call.
Okay. Councillor Adil?
Yes, it's four.
Councillor Arjun?
Four.
Councillor Borman?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Cash?
Four.
Councillor Edson?
Four.
Councillor Everden?
Four.
Councillor Mohammed Hayder?
Four.
Councillor Anuma Hayder?
Four.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
Four.
Councillor Lord?
Four.
Councillor Meek?
Four.
Councillor Moreland?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Rutland?
Four.
Councillor Warraven?
Four.
Councillor Webb?
Four.
So that's carried. Now we come to item number five. Now, I think this is another one where when we talk about assessed for environmental sustainability, unless we can come up with some way that it's done without cost, we definitely have cost. So councillor Meek, can you come up with an explanation about how this can be done that doesn't need money spending on it? Sorry, but this is going to be my theme for the rest of the meeting. councillor Meek?
You've put me on the spot there, haven't you?
I saw.
It wasn't intended that this should be in any way asking for money. I think we've actually identified in the Climate Change Working Party that there are some costs within council, for Seaford Town Council, that could possibly be avoided at the moment. I mean, we've actually identified that the electricity bill at the View is eighteen thousand pounds a year, which seems to me inexplicable. And the gas bill on top takes it up to twenty four thousand pounds a year for energy at the View. What we're suggesting is that things like this should be looked at and should be evaluated properly and maybe other suppliers should be looked at. And actually even a solar array should be considered at the View. Now, okay, that is a cost, a capital cost. But if over the years it's going to save you a huge amount of money, you have to look at that as a climate change initiative with a financial benefit. This is what I think we can look at. We can save money. Likewise, the natural burial site idea up at Seaford Head could raise a vast amount of money over five years. I think in five years' time, you could be raising fifty thousand pounds a year. These things need to be looked at. They just have to be looked at as a business proposition.
This is going to sound like I'm being very picky. Can you explain, define who the "we" is going to be doing the looking at?
Well, as I think I said in other papers, there are groups within Seaford, very able people like Charlie Grimble, who are very good. Now he's shaking his head, but what I'm saying, you are an able person. But what I'm saying is there are people who maybe have time, who could look at these things from a business perspective. And we can take their advice, which wouldn't necessarily cost us any money. If we've got voluntary people working in voluntary organisations, they may well be prepared to look at things, initiatives like this. And with their business, historical business sense, they may be able to give very good advice. It doesn't necessarily have to cost the council money.
Isabel and then councillor Cash?
Yes, I just wanted to just, just for clarification again, just to confirm really, that this is something that is already, I mean, it's done as part of everything that the officers do when they go to go and look at a project. They will always look at the sustainability. And I think also I just wanted to ask Karen, because I understood the fact that when it comes to all of our energy, every time that they're renewed, we would always look at the most cost effective and, you know, and energy efficient supplier. So I just wanted to ask Karen that question.
I'd like to say that with the energy, yes, we have an energy broker and we can't change any of our electricity or gas supplies until they come to the end of the contract. But Lucy, the finance manager and myself have already discussed that that is something that we will ask them to quote on it going forward every single time. As Isabel has said, when it comes to appraising a project or anything, it's something that will always be considered and part of the financial appraisal. I just wanted to say the other thing about, you know, as has been said before, it's not that officers don't support these ideas, we do. We're in a very, very difficult situation. And at the moment, we may not have enough money to last the end of the year. We do not have enough money to pump prime any project. Even if it'll make money, we just don't have the money. The only way something like a project could be carried forward would be if it was considered at the budget setting time. It was put into the budget and it was pre-empted for. So I think that, you know, for specific projects like the natural burial site, things like that, that's what needs to be looked at at the budget setting time.
councillor Lord, sorry.
I believe that that's already been looked at and the panels are not possible. But perhaps one of the other officers could actually clarify that a little bit more.
And we'll come back to that. councillor Lord, then councillor Cash? councillor Lord? Still, you're still muted councillor Lord?
Thank you Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the officers of Seaford Town Council and indeed Lewis District Council, because what they do, more importantly than serve, as well as serving energy, they also look at water and air supplies. And they are now in consultation with experts, who then can reduce the amount of money that we pay for our surface water, fresh water, because it can come from any person in the UK. So with regards to knocking people about in Lewis and Seaford County Council, that is not nice, because the council, the employees work their socks off to get the best results they can for Seaford and Lewis District Council. Thank you.
Hey, thank you councillor Lord. councillor Cash?
I just want to clarify something because I'm getting a bit confused now. I understood that what we were asking for is that when we can't get a report through on any subject in the council, that we always have an item on it that might say at the bottom, this has no financial cost or no financial implications. And I understood what we were asking for was the similar statement to be made about environmental issues as well. And so that council might be aware that a decision being made does have or doesn't have environmental considerations and that we ought to know about in making decisions. And I understood that it was no more complicated than that. What I don't understand, of course, because I don't know, is whether Isabel, you would think that that also had a lot of implications for you in time for officer time?
Yeah, I mean, exactly that. And also I'd be the first to admit that I don't have the expertise in that particular subject. I wouldn't want to try and assess something that I don't have the expertise in. So the council would need to consider, you know, who would actually do that appraisal to be able to, you know, properly report that.
Yeah, thank you. That does make it clearer. Thank you.
I think also, I think I heard Karen saying that these kind of things are considered in any cases. It's not made explicit in a number on the front page of a report, but things about energy efficiency are considered in, routinely considered. So I think that maybe the word henceforth is causing us a problem. But I think also that if we're, again, if we're saying that we would not, because we understand we can't afford to pay for consultants to do this, that we could have to draw in local voluntary expertise if this is, if any more is done than is currently done. councillor Meek?
I'd just like to point out that Lewis District Council has just made a huge statement about climate resilience and their climate policy. And they also now have a sustainability officer. So all it takes is maybe to try and link up with, with people who are, you know, their sustainability officer and with Matthew Bird as well, who's to do with the resilience. And maybe we can draw on a kind of district wide network, which I think is forming for advice and accountability for all our projects going forward. So it wouldn't necessarily, it's just a question of linking up with other advisory bodies.
So can we agree a form of words for item five that will get us past this then? Is it a pathogen?
Could I maybe just jump in? I mean, the council has already agreed that it wants to look at creating a strategic objective, sorry, about tackling climate change. And I do understand obviously that councillors have some concerns that this isn't an instant thing, just saying that we will look at creating a strategic objective. But I do think that actually, now that we've, or the council's committed to doing that, there's no reason why the working party can't do a lot of work behind the scenes so that when we're, the council's ready to agree this objective, we are pretty much ready to go with things. So maybe just to set out what I mean a bit better, sorry, is really that each strategic objective has three components. You have the objective that the council wants to achieve. Underneath that, you have kind of the breakdown of aims to help the council achieve that objective. And then beneath that, you have the actions that the officers largely are going to do to help the council achieve its aims to achieve that objective. So I think what we're looking at here is one of those actions that will be done to try and help the council achieve this objective. So I think at this point in time, I mean, as Izzy said, you know, we don't have the expertise to begin to look at the environmental implications of what the council's doing across the board. You know, certainly in the interim, while we look at whether or not that can be achieved and, you know, it wouldn't need training and it wouldn't need to know who we could go to and who we could network with. But in the interim, the working party could maybe take on that role. You know, if there's reports on an agenda, the working party members that are at that meeting could take it upon themselves to speak at the meeting about the environmental implications of what's being proposed. So I think, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is to have an instruction for officers to do something on the council's behalf that we're really going to struggle to be able to do. But I think certainly, like I said, there's no reason why this can't form a bigger part of the council's strategic objective. And there's no reason why the working party can't look at having everything in place. So once that objective's agreed, we can run with this. We can get the training done. We can amend our report template so it includes an environmental implication section. But right now, I think we just need to break it down into bite sized chunks so that we're not going to be overwhelmed.
So councillor Meek, would you be willing for this item five to be taken back into the working party?
Yes, I think so.
I think if everybody is content, if we could let that be the action, that number five goes back to the working party for more detailing. councillor Edson?
I just wonder if we could just change item five in any way. So it reflects councillors doing the work. And I suggest that it reads, "Agree that henceforth, any project or development Seaford Town Councilers consider is assessed for environmental sustainability and resilience." Stop.
Yeah, that, I mean, that puts the onus on the, if you like, the volunteer side of it. But I think from what councillor Meek has already agreed, that this can be taken back into the working party and further developed and brought back to us again. I think I'm seeing people nodding on that's acceptable. councillor Edson, would you be content with that?
Yeah.
So I think number five goes back to the working party for more detailing. Number six, within the Climate Change Working Party, there is a working party report. There is a section called business plan or business planning. I think the, the item we're talking about is appendix two on page sixty. And we've already heard about some of the income generating ideas or expenditure reducing ideas. I understand item six to be that these ideas be put to the relevant council committee or council meeting. And I think I need to take advice from the officers here. I think that the tenth of September meeting is specific to Covid responses, rather than being a full council finance meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, so the extraordinary meeting that is being, that would be called by the mayor, was to specifically look at the Covid crisis. So officers' recommendations wouldn't be to take any other items within that meeting. But what we've actually, we would be asking is that that was taken to the next ordinary meeting of the council, which is the fifteenth of October. That would also give the working party obviously a bit more time to look at what we talked about tonight as well. Just as a point.
councillor Meek, the view on this is not that it's not urgent, but that the meeting scheduled for September is specific to Covid and that the ideas into the business plan or the income generating, income reducing or expenditure reducing ideas can be fed into the council processes. It could go into finance and general purposes. It could go into the budget making cycle. But it's just, it wouldn't, as we understand it now, it wouldn't easily sit into the extraordinary finance meeting, which is extraordinary finance, but Covid specific.
If the other members of the working party are happy with that, I am.
Yeah, so councillor Cash, hand up, speak? You're on mute?
Had we come to an agreement on the wording of the previous item, please?
The previous item wasn't put to vote. There wasn't a proposal put on the table.
That goes back to the working party councillor Cash?
Right, okay.
Okay, so on item, where are we at? Item six. Councillor Meek was asking other members of the Climate Change Working Party if they were content for that to, the ideas to be fed to the October council meeting or into another forum, such as the Climate Change Working, such as the Finance General Purposes Committee. I see Karen asking to speak.
Yes Chair, I would be happy to discuss a bit nearer the time with councillor Meek the financial implications of what he's considering. I think I've already said that when it comes to budget setting time, I will be given lots of different options of what we can do and what effect that has on the precept for councils to make a decision. And I would be happy to put that in the budget report in December. Now, I've no, nothing against it going in October, if that's what council agrees, to discuss it beforehand. But I don't think a decision can be made until December, in fact, till January. It would go to FNGP in December, but it would go to full council in January at the budget setting time.
I think councillor Meek is indicating, is he, do you contend with that or asking to speak councillor Meek?
No, I am asking to speak, but I'm also content with that. The thing is, Karen, these, we recognise are very long term projects anyway. So a lot of the footwork can be done without cost, but just to kind of investigate. But I wanted to present it, these ideas to council as long term possibilities that if people have ideas, they could feed into. Because if we all kind of use our imagination on this, I mean, South Hill Barn has been a project which officers have worked on for a long time. But I think the thinking behind it is that it's going to be a very expensive project and we're going to have to raise a lot of money to be able to do it. But one of our ideas was, could we not let South Hill Barn as it is in the meantime, at a very low cost? If it didn't involve a lot of officer time, it might be worth doing it to bring some revenue in. These are the kind of ideas we're trying to think about.
councillor Borman's asking to speak. councillor Borman first?
Thank you Chair. I agree councillor Meek with South Hill Barn one. It's something that we can look into quite soon. The natural burials, I really like that, but I know that is a long time one. And we did agree earlier in this meeting that there would be no projects unless there was outside funding until after April twenty one, which we agreed earlier on. So I do agree with Karen that we do need to look at any projects that need to go into the next budget. But if they are self funding and don't take any resources, then that's what we should be taking forward, maybe to the October meeting if preferable.
Karen, you asking to speak?
Again Chair, other officers may know a bit more about this than me, but I know that I've spoken to Tony about South Hill Barn. And I believe it is up for rent and anybody can rent it whenever they want to at the moment, but they don't really seem to want to. And the other thing at the moment is it is used for storage of the beach huts, which as we found out recently, to try and get anything stored is quite expensive. So at least by it being at South Hill Barn, it's not costing us anything extra over and above what we're spending at the moment. So I just wanted to feed that back, basically.
Thank you. To move us on from item six then, where we're agreeing that the business ideas that are in the Climate Change Working Party's report can be presented to the, could be presented to the October council meeting and could also go to the FNGP in December. Are we content that that's what we've just said? Karen, Karen?
Chair, that actually that they will be considered, change the resolution to say they will be considered as part of the council's budget setting process. And you don't need to put a date on it.
councillor Meek, you content with that? Right, so you're saying now? So this is, so we're, so you're saying now that the ideas in the climate change working party business plan document are presented, are taken into the council's budget-making process?
Presented as part of.
A part of.
Yeah.
So that the, the ideas in that report as for business are part of the council's budget-making process.
Presented to council as part of the budget-making process.
Budget-making process. Councillor Brown?
I'd like to make that proposal, just as you said there.
Okay, so that's proposed by councillor Brown. Someone second that? Councillor, councillor Webb, you're seconding that? Asking to speak? Seconding, okay, right. A roll call.
And Georgia, have you been able to put that in the, or would you be able to just type that into the comment?
Okay, so what's the comment, what's the chat bar for the actual, the resolution as revised?
Can I, I'd still say presented to council as part of the budget-making process.
To agree that ideas in the CCWP business plan document are presented. So it says as part of the council's budget-making process.
Yes, but it doesn't say it's presented to council.
Georgia, if we can make it a specific, presented to council as part of the council, as part of the budget-making process.
It's in chat.
Yes, I think that's now in. Everybody can see your copy.
Can the, can the previous proposer just confirm that they're still proposing that revised item?
Councillor Brown, is this what you're, you're content, this is what you've proposed?
Yes, absolutely. I sort of wish what you said.
Yes, that's, that's accepted. And that was seconded, I think councillor Webb, are you still content to second that? Okay, roll call.
Four. Can you hear me?
Councillor Argent? Councillor Borman? Councillor Brown? Councillor Cash? Councillor Edson? Councillor Everden? Councillor Mohamed Hader? Councillor Renu Mahada? Councillor Olivia Honeyman? Councillor Lord? Councillor Meek? Councillor Moreland? Councillor Reed? Councillor Rutland? Councillor Allraven? Councillor Webb?
Okay, thank you. We're at the final point, this is number seven. What it says is not to pursue a climate change awareness day on the 19th of September. The reason for that is not enough time to consult the traders or to get a street road closure licence permit. But the sanction the working party to plan for an event of this nature at a future date to be agreed by councillors and depending on COVID-19, COVID restrictions of health and safety security. So this is a proposal to permit or to sanction or to task the working party to plan for a climate change awareness day at some point when it becomes legal to do so. Does anyone want to speak to this councillor Cash?
Could I ask, could I ask Isabel just to explain what she told to me in a, in a response to that?
Yes, so it was just.
Isabel then councillor Cash.
It was just to confirm again that the town council cannot delegate to a working party. So again, it would need to be delegated to an officer or committee. So it's similar to what Georgia said earlier. I think what the officers' recommendation would be that this again forms part of the wider climate change strategic objective. And this would be an action within it, say to hold up to two events per year to raise climate change awareness. So it's similar to what, you know, we've got events within our strategic objectives at the moment. So it would just be something that would be more, and then again, that comes under the officers, that everything gets looked at.
Councillor Cash?
Would that be put in immediately Isabel? I mean, if we pass that tonight, would it then go forward and, so how long would that wait before that goes in?
Again, we don't know. I mean, this is, this is the situation we're in. We, we really do want to review the strategic objectives, that's out of date. So we would be wanting this to be a priority as much as you would want it to be a priority in terms of reviewing the strategic objectives as soon as possible. Can't put a date on that.
Can someone come up with a revised form of words for this?
I mean, what I mean is by our recommendation, I mean, our recommendation as a revision would be that this forms again part of, so whether it's that you wanted to go back to the working party, like item, item five went back to the working party, so that then that could be looked at on the wider strategic objective and they, all the work behind the scenes could be done in terms of getting that strategic ready, a strategic objective ready.
Councillor Meek?
I was just going to suggest, could this be an initiative that could be inspired by the climate change working party but could be enacted by the community services committee?
Just again, just the restriction of the resources. Again, I can't stress that enough.
Okay, well, Chair, can we, can we take it back to the climate change working party to work on in that case? Because I don't see we're going to be able to progress it tonight possibly.
Okay, so are the climate change working party content for it to go back to the, to the working party?
Just, can I just add on to that, just with the original recommendation that came with the report, just that officers were obviously more than happy to help in any way they can in terms of sharing awareness via the town council's website and on the social media channels. So it's, in terms of there being something we can immediately do now, if there are some ideas coming through the working party where you want us to help raise awareness, there's examples, we, you know, we helped with raising the awareness of the World Oceans Day, we've done Classic Free July. So anything along those lines, please just let us know, we can share that information and we'd be more than happy to.
We take item seven, five and seven back to the working party, but with that offer to raise profile for climate change awareness using the council's website and social media accounts. Content with that? Yes. So, so with that, I intend to draw this, this agenda item to a close. Does anybody have anything else to say on this agenda item or we'll move on? I don't see anybody offering to speak, so we move on. So we move now to item number 10. And we're very nearly at the end of the agenda. So Izzy, do you want to speak to item 10, agenda 10?
Could I throw this item over to Karen actually?
Yes, Chair. We're in a very unusual situation in that we've actually, we've already got agreement from councils to go ahead with the pump house that desperately needs doing, because if the pump house fails, then our income stream fails because the golf course will not be able to, it won't be, it won't be suitable for members basically. So we've done the normal tender process, we've put it on contracts finder, which usually generates quite a lot of interest. I think we've, I've not got the report in front of me, but I think we had something like eight inquiries, five people came and looked around. But actually, when we actually got the final tenders in, we only had one. So it is against financial regulations for our officers to accept one tender. It has to go back to council. So financial regulations, for a tender this amount, it would be accepted by the clerk or the RFO and the member of the relevant committee. But we've brought it back to council, basically to say, we've only got this one tender, it's been appraised by Simon, the green, the chief greenkeeper, and Tony, the projects and facilities manager. They say that they think it's a good tender and it will work. It's within the price range that we expect it to be. So we're asking council's permission to go with this company.
I'd like to hear from the Chair of the Gulf and the View Committee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We've heard what Karen said and she's absolutely right, that there should, you know, we should be in a situation where there are three tenders, but there's only one. This tender has been appraised, it is financially viable, it's within the money that's already been budgeted. I therefore propose that we accept the recommendation to approve waiving financial regulations to allow the contract for the building of replacement pump house at Seaford Head Golf Course to be awarded to the only tender received following the full tender process.
Okay, thank you councillor Brown. I've seen that councillor Borman and councillor Cash want to speak. Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Usually I wouldn't like to accept just one tender. We had a similar situation at Lewis District where we didn't quite have enough tenders and there was quite a lot of discussion over it. But over these times, it is within our budget and it does need doing, otherwise we are going to have more losses. So I would like to second councillor Brown's proposal that we accept, at this one time that we accept the one tender.
Councillor Cash, then we move to the vote.
No, I accept what councillor Borman says.
So it's proposed and seconded. And it's a roll call.
Okay, councillor Adil?
Four.
Councillor Argent? Councillor Borman? Councillor Brown? Councillor Cash? Councillor Edson? Councillor Everden? Councillor Renu Mahada? Councillor Olivia Honeyman? Councillor Lord?
Four.
Councillor Meek? Councillor Moreland?
abstain.
Councillor Reed?
Councillor Rutland?
Okay.
It woke up.
Fingers slapped off there.
No, they don't, yeah. Publish a screenshot of that one then. I think we'll say that councillor Rutland abstains.
Ask him tomorrow.
Councillor Allraven? Okay, that's carried.
Okay, so thank you all for enduring a very long meeting. I think we've done some useful stuff. And just in closing, I just want to report my thanks as mayor for the service of councillor Phil Borman to the town council. So we thank him for his service, clearly he's now resigned from the council, but we mark his, we mark his work for Seaford and the town with our thanks. And with that, the meeting comes to an end. So thank you all, and I think we've been a useful and productive meeting, so it's closed.